Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this opportunity that we have to be in a country of freedom, a country of, where so many women have sacrificed their lives for us as, Lord, these supervisors make choices and they make decisions that help guide Pinal County to being a great county in Arizona. I just pray that you will bless this meeting, just let your peace be on this meeting, and Lord, your love and your patience be on this meeting. We just thank you for this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Call this meeting to order. First thing I need to announce is Supervisor Surti is running a few minutes late. He will be here. He informed us to go ahead and start, so he'll be popping in at some moment here. So first order of business is call to the public. I have, kind of back to the old method, I have two slips requesting to speak. So I have Joseph McKnight. Is Joseph McKnight here? And he wishes to address the board of supervisors. Okay, thank you. Three minutes, give us at least a general idea of where you live.
My name is Joseph McKnight. I live in Santan Valley. So, Mr. Chairman, good morning, and Board of Supervisors, good morning. Last time I was here, I was gimpy with my crutches, but I mentioned that I came representing the Santan Advisory Council and the Board of Directors, and I mentioned that we looked forward to a partnership with Pinal County in order to help address the needs of Santan Valley community. We were blessed to have been able to apply for and receive some grant funds to help support our effort to be able to reach out and help, start helping the community of Santan Valley. I'm here to report what we've been able to do thus far. We have established a 501(c)(4) for our organization and have applied for a 501(c)(3) as we seek to further, seek for further financial support from grants, businesses, and community members. We have established a website and social media accounts in order for us to reach as many community members as we can. These platforms will also help us get communication out about events and meetings that Pinal County is trying to get out to the community. It will allow us to help communicate messages from the county and seek feedback from surveys and other means to help provide insight and data so that the county can make the best-informed decisions they can on behalf of the community. We have started to do community outreach already. We have been at the Bella Vista Library opening, attending zoning meetings, and are actively pursuing other meetings that we might be able to engage further with the community. We have identified and continue to identify various ways to reach out to the community for member recruitment and to find community members that wish to be a part of the subcommittees we have established. Currently, we have four subcommittees that originated from the special area plan Santan Valley. They are broadening economic opportunities, improve transportation, live healthy, and strengthen the community. Some of these areas, some of these, excuse me, some of these subcommittees will need to break off into their own subcommittee so that it has the proper attention, and this will naturally occur as we increase our membership. You will find that all of these items that I have reviewed is a part of the action plan that was submitted to the board, and as a whole, we have honored each of the time commitments we have made to the Board of Supervisors, and will continue to return and report on the work we have been able to accomplish. I want to thank you for your faith and trust in allowing each of the members of the Santan Valley Advisory Board to work on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Barry McCain. Barry McCain? Kane? Give us a general idea of where you reside.
Okay.
Tell us what's on your mind.
Good morning, Chairman Miller and Board of Supervisors. My name is Barry McCain from Arizona City. What we've been experiencing lately has been what I call a threshold for justice. Threshold for justice means that when people have become, gone through so much injustice, they decide themselves, where they become active, an active advocate for the community. That's what we've gone through because of this COVID. It's forced us into that. Every war that we've ever had has started because of abuse of power and lack of humanity. Here, we show a lot of respect for each other. That's what I like about Pinal County, is the fact we do show this. But the Constitution starts us at "we, the people." But my question is, how come, generally speaking, it feels like government is not for the people, but yet using the people? We have so much to do now, but we know, we've gone through these problems, gone through the yelling and pointing the finger at everybody else, we can now start worrying about the actual efficient and effective way to address healthcare, jobs, education, transportation, and all the other things that really need to be addressed. And I'm sorry that we've had to go this hard way, but maybe we have done our best. Thank you.
Thank you. I will offer to the public, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Board of Supervisors?
Good morning. Tom Bean, Casa Grande. I want to tell a story that's true, but it happened before COVID-19. So this, there are three supervisors here who are kind of, they don't have to worry, and the other two, you don't have to worry either. Before the COVID, my partner and I, good friend, I should say, Roberto Ravelas and I, were sitting in our usual seats waiting for this meeting to begin. Behind us, we heard two people come in and sit down, and they were really confused. They, oh, what do we do? How do we sign up? How do we talk? What, you know? Roberto turned around and said, "Can I help you?" The gentleman said, "Oh, I hope so. I am Jewish, and I believe that the code enforcement man who's coming out to my property and continually giving us citations and warnings, I think he's Jewish also." And, excuse me, anti-Jewish. And I believe that there are two board members who are anti-Jewish. Well, Roberto said, "Whoa, you know, wait a minute here, calm down." And he tried to reassure them that he had no reason to believe that. And the gentleman seemed to be a little bit at ease. And then bam, the gavel comes down, the meeting starts, we give the call to the chaplain to come up and give a prayer, an invocation. One too bad of one, actually, one of his better ones, but he ended it with, "In Jesus' name we pray." I can't convey to you how I felt. It was something inside of me, just, here we're working so hard to convince this man and his wife that, no, this building, this board, these people are not anti-Jewish, and what do they do? "In Jesus' name we pray." It was chilling. Now, the Supreme Court ruled many years ago about prayer in government meetings. Basically, they didn't like the idea of prayer in government meetings. They didn't say you can't have it, but they did say that the prayer has to be non-denominational. Believe me, "In Jesus' name we pray" does not qualify. Once again, I call upon this, well, mainly the chair, because I think the chair has the power to remove the invocation from these meetings. It's divisive, and if you could only know what I felt when I heard that after just trying to convince two people that they can get a fair shake here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board of Supervisors?
Good morning, Board. Thank you for taking time to hear us out. I'm just going to go ahead and read this. My name is Andrea Wills, and I am a resident and owner in Copper Basin, the Copper Basin small community within Santan Valley. My name is Andrea Wills. I'm a resident and homeowner in the Copper Basin Residential subdivision in Santan Valley. As you may be aware, the Dollar General is in discussion with Simon Creed to build a new store on a vacant lot next to rural metro, the fire department, in the Copper Basin residential neighborhood. I am here to represent those residents opposed to this project. There are several concerns regarding this project. I will be brief in summarizing the top concerns we have. The proposed lot is directly in the center of a school zone, heavily populated with children walking to and from school every day. The speed limit is 15 miles an hour in that direct area, and there are several crosswalks, excuse me, surrounding this lot. The added traffic to the portion of this residential community, as well as the proposed alterations to the road to accommodate for that added traffic, pose a severe risk to the safety of our children. The added traffic of non-residents will likely increase the number of speeding cars, accidents, loitering, noise, and quite possibly crime. Our roads will deteriorate more quickly. The semi-trucks will be routed into the neighborhood for deliveries to the store. This added traffic will also accelerate road deterioration. This type of business will add unwanted light and noise pollution to an otherwise quiet residential neighborhood. A Dollar General will not increase our property value, and based on our research, will most likely have a negative effect. We do understand this property is zoned commercial, and it is inevitable that a business will eventually be built. However, a Dollar General is not advantageous within the boundaries of any purely residential community. Our community believes a small business that caters to a more targeted clientele will be more beneficial to those who live within Copper Basin. Copper Basin's original feel was meant to promote small hometown appeal, and the majority of residents moved out there for that specific appeal. A Dollar General would not promote that objective, but would instead have a negative impact on the safety and appeal of Copper Basin and its nearly 6,000 residents. We in Copper Basin strongly encourage you to reconsider this proposed plan and consider denying Dollar General the ability to acquire that lot for lease, and not only for the safety for our children, but the benefit and value and appeal of Copper Basin as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. For the record, I do want to announce that Supervisor Surti has joined a meeting at this point. Back to the call of the public, is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none. Moves us to item number two on the agenda, which is a presentation by Michael McCord, I guess, the Pinal County Treasurer's Office, won a 2021 Arizona Association and Counties submitted award for property tax mobility. Treasurer McCord? Do you want to give us a little rundown on how great a department you have over there?
Yeah, well, pretty exciting times for the Treasurer's Office. I'm Mike McCord, the Pinal County Treasurer, Chairman. We are actually two-time award-winning because we won a very similar merit award last year for our use of technology, the QR codes, our mobile apps, which we put in for this year. So the Arizona Association of Counties, for the, for the audience and anybody watching, is kind of the lobbying arm for the elected officials, other than the Board of Supervisors, because the board has their own County Supervisors Association. So ACO represents the assessors, the treasurers, when there's bills that want to be run by one of our affiliate groups. I was lucky enough this year to be elected as the president of ACO, and not only so in winning the presidency, we also have these wonderful awards, and it would not have been possible without our amazing IT staff, Wiley, who is here with me, and Pat Beckworth, my chief deputy, and coming up with these innovative ways to make paying their taxes easier and having access to their tax information easier on their mobile devices. So we are lucky. We have our merit award in which we won, and our summit award in which we won at the meeting in November for the Arizona Association of Counties. So if we could maybe get a picture so we can celebrate our victory.
Sounds like a photo op?
Yes. Why not?
Well, make sure you get your staff up here, too.
Absolutely. And we'll be working on the trifecta next year, so.
Horse racing, it's the Triple Crown.
All right. Brings us to item number three on the agenda, which is the County Manager's Report. Information only.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just wanted to give a heads up to everybody that next Wednesday, we're going to be doing a work session on the development code update. So if developers, builders want to tune in, that'll be a good session, and if they want to give any feedback from that, they can do so through my office. Thank you.
Okay, super. Anybody have any questions for? Hearing and seeing none. Moves us to item number four, which is amended purchase division report from December 1. And is Karen Williams or Randy Stettin here? Okay, Karen.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. I am Tiara Peterson.
Oh, Tiara Peterson.
The new purchasing manager for Pinal County, and this is your purchasing report for December 1, 2021.
Very good. Thank you.
First up today, the board has requested to approve the following new contract awards. IFB 222522, we recommend Walker River Construction be awarded a contract in the bid amount of $1,036,301 for 11-mile corner wastewater treatment facility upgrade. This contract will be used by the Facilities Department. IFB 223623, we recommend Meridian Engineering Company be awarded a contract in the bid amount of $6,418,62.50 for Sunland Gin Road project between Bataglia Road to the north and Monaco Boulevard to the south. This contract will be used by Public Works. Next, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 170223, first, we recommend approval of amendment number five to exercise the optional extension period from January 30, 2022, through January 29, 2023, with Securus Technologies Incorporated for inmate telephone services. This contract is used by the Sheriff's Department. RFP 172322, next, we recommend approval of amendment number four for aviation parts and services to exercise the optional extension from January 24, 2022, through January 23, 2023, with the following suppliers: Able Aerospace Services, Inc., Aero Products Component Services, Airborne Engines Limited, Capsco International Corporation, Aero Performance, Aeronautical Accessories, AVL, Cocoonino Welding and Fabrication LLC, HeliBlade, Inc., IAR Technical Services, Mint Turbines LLC, Prime Turbines, Standard Aero Limited, Heloponics, Inc., Logistic Air, Precision Hel support LLC, Pro Flight Gear LLC. There are no extensions remaining. This contract is used by the Pinal County Sheriff's Department. And lastly, the board has requested to approve the following cooperative purchases with a value exceeding $250,000. Requisition 162647, in the amount of $704,081.60. I believe that there is a typo for your supplier. It should read United Truck and Equipment Incorporated. For the 6,500-gallon trailer A36, and this will be used by the Fleet and Public Works Departments. And requisition 163224, in the amount of $351,835.62, with Nesbit Contracting Company, Inc., for the Santan Heights paver replacement project, and this will be used by the Public Works Department. And that concludes your purchasing division report for December 1, 2021.
Very good. Any questions? For Tiara? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion? And I guess the motion needs to include the typo.
It does. Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing, the amended purchasing agreement dated, is the date's date?
December 1.
December 1, 2021, with the additional correction on United Truck and Equipment, Inc.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you, Chair. Okay, brings us to item number five on the consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So does anyone on the board have anything they want removed?
Mr. Chairman, item X.
County manager? Anybody from the, anybody from the public? Seeing none? I have a motion. Do I have a motion to accept consent agenda minus X?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda with the exception of item X.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. X is a, it's got a civil hearing. Natasha, do we need to get somebody online, or do we have them online? Because it indicates here in my notes, X through AC. Susan Goodwin?
Yes, we are trying to get counsel on the line now, and then also, we do have county staff here available as well.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, members of the Board of Supervisors. Darren Gary with the Office of the County Attorney appearing for Scott Johnson.
Okay. Do we want to start, or do we want to make sure we get Susan on board? If you don't mind, we'll...
We can go ahead and start, Chairman. Susan is not answering the phone right now.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you again. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Supervisors. Darren Gary appearing for Mr. Scott Johnson on behalf of the Pinal County Attorney's Office. This is a matter involving outside storage, accessory uses, and fences on land that should be vacant. Site inspections were completed indicating violations on the property. Code enforcement had attempted to make contact with the homeowners through certified mail and mail. A hearing was scheduled in this matter, and notice of the hearing was posted on the property. There was no appearance at the subsequent hearing by the owners of the property despite those efforts, and default entry was made with respect to the violations on the property. This is land that should be vacant. There is apparently fencing on the property, which is shielding some of the activity that may be going on behind that fencing, so there may be some concerns there. And so our purpose today here, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Supervisors, is to request authorization to pursue enforcement through the use of the courts.
Okay.
Also, Chairman, for the record, we now do have Susan Goodwin on the line. If there are any additional questions.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I typically contact folks in my district when there's an action like this and just kind of get the big picture. And I saw this one started under a previous case, but that that information wasn't included. And we have a cleanup coming up in Randolph, I think, on the 11th of December, and so I didn't know if the, if anyone has ever been able to contact the owner, if this cleanup on the 11th would mitigate anything that would the county have to do in the near future. Or can you, can you?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'll let Mr. Johnson address that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh, sorry, I just ran over here, but as far as, we have not contacted this person directly regarding that cleanup. We did start a new case. Once that new case started, Mr. TK Hunters is the code officer on this case. He might be able to, excuse me.
You're all right.
Identify whether or not this would be good for the probation cleanup or not. Sorry, I was just ran over from court. So he might be able to, I know there are a number of properties that we give to the code compliance people to review for whether or not that would be applicable or not. He might have more information on whether or not this would be one of those properties.
Okay. So do you want, just have TK up here?
Morning. He operates out of my office, I see him all the time. So the issue with this property is, with the Cortez property, we've never been able to contact him. We tried to do personal service on him also. He always, his gate's always locked. He has dogs in there. He's never there. I've gone out there and beeped the horn, nobody ever comes out. Sorry, I'm trying to catch my breath. And we attempted a personal service, and they couldn't even get a hold of him, so we had to do alternative service on the property for the civil hearing office. The property originally was, belonged to someone else, and when the property ownership changed, because it was encroachment by Mr. Cortez onto this property, he fenced in property that didn't belong to him. And there's also an ongoing case in Superior Court for the original property that Mr. Cortez owns, and this just kind of added to it. So there's never been any contact by our office, by him, because we can't get a hold of him.
Okay, and this, the other case had been going on for quite some time.
The previous case on this property, yes, it was going on for, I believe it was a year. That wasn't my case. But I believe it was a year, and that property owner finally just got fed up, and he quit claim deed of the property over to Mr. Cortez.
Oh, okay. They'll switch route. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions for staff and us? Okay, board's pleasure? Did you have something else?
That is, as crazy as that sounds, that's all accurate, that all of that is accurate.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve of item X as presented.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you, guys. Get in shape. You're going to have us all on treadmill. Okay, I want to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting at this point, so I can open up the public health meeting. So Board of Supervisors meeting is recessed, and we will open up the Pinal County Public Health Services District Board of Directors meeting. First item of business is a purchasing division report, Public Health, December 1, 2021. And Tiara, are you doing this one again? Okay. Thank you.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, purchasing manager for Pinal County with your Public Health District purchasing report for December 1, 2021. The board is requested to approve the following contract amendment. The board is requested to approve the following contract amendment for 202225 ER. We recommend approval of amendment number two to extend the contract term with the University of Arizona for COVID case investigation services from August 20th, 2021 through August 19th, 2022. There are no extensions remaining and this contract is used by the Pinal County Public Health Services District. And that concludes your Public Health Service District purchasing division report for December 1st, 2021.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Okay. Seeing none. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing department report for the public health, deeded December 1st, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. So item number two is a consent item. All items indicated with an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. And I have received a request to pull item A by Mr. Rovales. Roberto, is that correct?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
I request an opportunity to ask a question on item number six, meeting of the Public Health Services.
That's what we're on. It's a separate agenda, Roberto. So there's, we just did the purchasing division and then the consent item on item number six is the public health, the public health, this is item A. It's the only other item on this agenda.
I had a question.
Okay. Then you have a question? Absolutely. Feel free to ask it.
Yes, not related to the purchasing agreement.
No. It's on, the second item on the agenda is, is a consent item, but we've pulled it. So you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
My question is one really, I'm quite involved in our Apache Junction Unified School District. And there is a concerning piece of information that appears on the Public Health Department's dashboard, which reflects a significant number of cases in Apache Junction. In Pinal County with Apache Junction having the second highest incidence of COVID cases. But the more concerning question that I would like to have clarification on is that Apache Junction has the, the fifth, hold on, has the fifth largest number of cases. It has the second largest number of deaths reported, 40 deaths. And my clarif, the clarification I'd like is, is that involving deaths of students or deaths of employees of the school district?
Kind of a break, kind of a breakdown.
Yes.
Well, we'll see if we can get an answer. Ms. Spears? Dr. Spears?
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Members. Tasha Spears, Public Health. Thank you so much for the question. At this time, I don't have the specific breakdown. However, what I can tell you is that the number, the aggregate number is correct. And with regard to deaths of children, those are not specifically deaths of students, nor are they specifically related to school deaths. So those are death fatalities in their totality for that particular area. Those are described as COVID-related deaths. So we recently did a breakdown of deaths of children. And so I can tell you that those are not specifically student-related deaths.
Can I clarify your answer, Roberto?
It's the general population within those ZIP codes. That's correct.
The ZIP code?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman? I followed up on that also. And from what I can get from the school is there have been no student deaths. There was one teacher, an elderly teacher, is the only one that directly related to the school itself, school system.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, Chairman. So if I could just clarify as well, so one of the, one of the guidelines that we follow as well is to simply give the aggregate number, particularly since if we had, for example, perhaps one individual or one student, we certainly were attempting to be careful to not allow for identifying information. And that's why we, on our dashboard, keep our numbers in an aggregate sense as well.
Okay. Makes sense, yeah. Okay. Any other questions? This will just be a suggestion, Roberto, maybe if you need to, you can contact Tasha Spears direct and see if you can extract more detail.
Yes, we would be more than happy to answer any questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Can I get a motion to, on item A?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items, the consent items as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. I'm adjourning the Public Health District meeting. And we opened the Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting. And get to the right page here. Brings me to item number seven on the agenda. It does have a public hearing component. It's on a resolution 2021 SUP 001-21. And I show Gilbert as being presented. You don't look like Gilbert.
Nope. Nope. Second string in today.
For sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board Members. My name's Steve. I'm with Community Development. Today's special use permit is for a commercial dog kennel in a general rural zone located on two and a half acres. And it's on the south side. There we go. Located on the south side of Highway 79 and south of East Panther Butte Road, which is in proximity to the unincorporated Saddle Brook Ranch area, but it's well north of that. As the map will show here is indicated by the red star, Oracle Junction, located further south. And then Park Link is that red line that connects I-10 and the 79. Zooming in even further to the subject site, our property is the red box on this map. The light blue color is State Trust Land. And not shown too well on this slide is Highway 79 goes diagonally northeast of the subject site. Of interest is the blue box that's kind of shaped like a mailbox flag is an old Titan missile site, by the way. So actually, there's a couple of those in the county. And not to digress too much on today's presentation, that's, that's an old one there. Further, zooming in on the subject site with a aerial photograph showing development patterns in the immediate area, primarily acre and above lots in the adjacent to the property. Zooming in even further, we have a couple of acre and a quarter land divisions surrounding the property, all zone general rural. This is the subject site. Trace Lomas, primarily the access to the property. The applicant's dwelling is where that red dot is. And pulling out a little even further, somewhat undeveloped in the immediately adjacent, but further out, we've got some single-family home sites. This is the applicant's site plan, how the property is developed. And you can probably tell from the application that the kennel operation is already operational. The dog kennels will be located on the left side of the site plan there. So it would be the west. The primary dwelling is almost smack dab in the middle. Some photos. Some items for consideration. These were also presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission that dogs are obtained from various locations throughout Tucson, so generally on the southern side of our county. And then they're boarded at this property. They're picked up daily and there's, the applicant tells us there'll be an average of three pickups per day. The maximum number of vehicles expected over the course of one day is 10, but only one vehicle is permitted on the site at one time. The owner will not have any additional employees. It's open seven days a week. There's no dog training, grooming, or any other additional services other than boarding and daycare. And like all outdoor dog-related facilities, barking, smells, some maintenance issues come up. But the applicant tells us that they will secure the dogs in their dedicated indoor kennel spaces. And if they're noisy, they will be restricted to their, will be restricted. So they won't be able to roam freely about the property. Just as a reminder, with the special use permits, you have to determine that there is a need for the proposed special use in the neighborhood and community and that it serves a general public purpose to satisfy a need for this service in the immediate area. Now, there have been a couple of letters of support and opposition. And let me jump ahead to that and I'll come back to that slide. These were some late arriving comments that we received. And just to sum up these emails that we got is that with, with a lot of dog kennel-related uses, there are concerns about traffic to the immediate area. There's concerns about smells and dogs barking and of the like. However, to that end, the Planning Commission at their regular meeting have voted to recommend approval of this, by the way. And they added a stipulation to require that all of those operational characteristics that are described in the applicant's materials in the staff and in the staff report. So staff added a couple more. The applicant had some, some things about containing those types of externalities that are typically associated with dog groomers are included in that, in that motion. So staff recommended approval. The commission ended up recommending approval with 14 stipulations. Now, quick procedural note, we do have to request that there be a change to stipulation 14. The one that's in contain, that's contained in your report, after looking at it a couple times, doesn't encapsulate those desires of the neighbors as best as we would like. And we would ask you that you change it to stipulation 14, that the design, construction, and operations of the commercial kennel and grooming facility shall be in substantial compliance with the submitted operational characteristics in the staff report and project narrative from August 2021. We had a updated motion and I think that was provided to you. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
If I could ask the clerk, could you go back to the letters of opposition and just let us read those for just a second? For some reason, I didn't see these in the packet.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So I have a question about this particular public comment. Do you know how far Mr. Don Kersley, if I said that right, lives from the property?
Let's see. Did he include his parcel number, dead grave of Patrified Lane? I do not know how far he lives from this. Mailouts were done to 600 feet perimeter and there was signage on the site.
May I interrupt you? If you look on the Google map and you look at the address, it's across the street and northeast. There's two homes there.
Okay. All right.
Supervisor, are you okay?
Thank you.
Supervisor Goodman, do you have a question?
I do. On these special use permits, how often are they need to be renewed?
This one's going to be under perpetuity. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
But with them, there can be, we can put limitations on those, correct? Or not?
You can put a time limitation on it, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One other question. How do you, how do you enforce the one vehicle at a time on the lot? That seems rather difficult.
So those, that's one of those kind of feel-good stipulations where the neighbors who are concerned about traffic would ultimately help, have to help us with that enforcement effort by taking pictures, repeated calls, and build, helping us build that case.
Any other questions or comments? Well, my comment is that we, this brought back memories of the dog kennel out in the Maricopa area at one time. It's like, oh my gosh. That really turned into be quite a problematic situation. But I do worry about the enforcement. I've always brought that up. Jeff, you're thinking the same way I do on a lot of this stuff. It's difficult to, to really have a handle on that on a daily or weekly basis. And we, and just in general, I know that a lot of, not a lot, I have individuals that have either had riding stables or things like that, or had people over to ride horses and do those types of things. And they've been shut down because they said, well, that's a commercial activity. And then turn around and you kind of end up doing a commercial activity in what is not a commercial zone, which is the reason for the SUP. So it doesn't mean I don't think this may be okay, but I just, I just am worried and I am concerned about not being reviewed on some kind of a basis, either annually or something to that effect.
It is complaint-driven.
Yeah. But, and if it's, there's complaints and then a year comes around, they have to redo or re-codify their SUP. I mean, we have an opportunity to see it again. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yeah, if that stipulation was added, yes.
Mr. Chair, to that, to that point is, one of the reasons why I asked the question, can we put time restrictions on these so that they can be reevaluated and looked at and assessed at that time in a year from now or whatever the case may be, whatever the decision. But that's where I'm kind of leaning on this one myself personally, so.
Do you have a question? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So on one hand, you know, we're concerned about the noise. On the other hand, if we, if we set this out for review in a year or two years or three years, then the person, I think these, these kennels are kind of expensive, 30,000 or 40,000 or 50,000 bucks they may put into a kennel. So that's something we need to consider too, is what is a reasonable time for review?
Right. No, that's absolutely a good point.
Mr. Chair, what if you did a year to start? I mean, this is bringing it into compliance. So if you did a year for the first review and then you could push it out after that to two to three years? Just to see if it's a problem, because that's what the complaints are, barking. So if there's a problem, then no. But if, but if you can go a year and there's no problems, then couldn't you stretch it from that point?
Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir. You want to hear from the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Chair and other supervisors. I'm Jason Sanks with Life Plan Consulting on behalf of Chris Emanuel. He's the owner of the dog kennel at Ridgeback Ranch. I'd like to address your concerns, if I may. I just wanted to address a few things. During the P&amp;Z, the meeting that we had a couple months ago, we also presented an exhibit indicating the context in which the kennel is located. All of the properties surrounding this property are of approximately the same size or larger. Many of them have livestock, horses, cows, dogs, cats, other large animals, large equipment. There's a lot of activity occurring in the neighborhood. The other part is, is that we also presented that in the, prior to the current owner's operation of the kennel, it was a kennel before, and it has been for over 15 years. And there have been no reported complaints on the operations of the kennel. It wasn't until we went through the notification process that a couple of the neighbors did present concerns that the kennel could materialize into something larger, like a larger kennel and operation. It's like, I believe, Chairman, you noted, there's a concern, could this just open the door? Camels knows under the tent. So the response to that at P&amp;Z was to layer in all of those conditions that specifically are enforceable, limiting so that it doesn't grow beyond what it's currently at. And the owner has no intention to even add a single other dog kennel to the property. In fact, he has probably a few more kennels than he needs. We also put restriction on the number of dogs. And the issue related to the pickup and drop-off is very specific because it's, he and his wife operate the kennel, and they have to be able to do the pet intake. And so with the owners, they actually have to schedule the time for pickup and drop-off with them in advance. You don't just randomly kind of show up and drop your dog off. You need to schedule it so that they can properly care for the animal and take it in, and not like have two or three dogs showing up at the same time. So it wasn't more a response to the traffic limiting for the neighbors as it was operationally, since it is only family-driven between he and his wife, that that's how they have to operate. And there's a restriction in your conditions that says it's family-owned, so no employees outside of the family shall work there. So it can't turn into some big commercial kennel. So I hope that alleviates some of your concerns. I certainly understand the issue with the time step. If you were to place a time step, I would ask on behalf of my client that we stretched it out, you know, beyond a year. It's expensive for him to file and go through all of this, several thousands of dollars. They're a very small operation. Even in fact, this case, of course, is quite expensive for them. But, you know, they're wanting to comply. They're good neighbors. And I had a very good candid conversation with the two neighbors that were in primary opposition to this, the gentleman that you speak of. And he really said, I don't like traffic down my street because people think that the kennel's here, not there. Could you put up some directional signage? That may help. And they really liked Chris Emanuel as the operator. It was the prior operator that gave him a little bit of heartburn. He was a little bit looser with the operations, whereas Chris and his family have maintained a pretty tight ship. And those conditions were added to make sure that the ship stays tight. So that was the solution to ensuring that you're getting what's presented to you today. So I'm a bit verbose, sorry, but I wanted you to know that there was some history and some security added to this SUP to present and deliver exactly what they're intending to operate, with some security.
Okay. I do have a question. It being a commercial kennel, is it inspected on a regular basis by, like, are animal control or, I mean, is there a standard by which kennels have to operate under?
Chairman, to be honest, I'm not 100% certain on that. If Chris has his operations inspected from animal control, it's possible that that would be based on a concern of animal care or welfare not being taken care of. Now, remember, these are his clients' pets. So if I'm taking a trip to Texas or somewhere, I go and I leave my dog in his care, and his clients are extremely loyal because of the care there. The idea of the ranch is like this kind of lovely place for dogs to stay, rather than being locked up in a concrete building somewhere for a week. They can be cared for and play with other dogs. So he's had no, I've had no known complaints on the property at any level since it's been operating in 15 years. We did a lot of research on the complaints issue. Now, the murmuring amongst the neighbors occurred with the prior owner, and most lately the concerns are noted in the email, that there's a concern that, the biggest concern was, they don't want this to grow into something more than it currently is. And our intention is to say that we're not going to allow that to happen, and the SUP has the conditions to ensure that's enforceable.
And for, just for some clarity on my part, it appears that all the equipment has already been purchased. It's been operating for 15 years?
Yes, it has, actually. So that, you know, I didn't want to really bring the board into the weeds a bit, but back in 2007, 2006, the prior owner had advised the current owner that he had been at the county. Remember, this was under a prior zoning ordinance. I think the newer zoning ordinance was adopted around 2011. And he was advised that he didn't need a special approval because it kind of fell under the term, the guise of livestock's allowed, there's all these animals that are allowed in this district already. Now, what's happened since then is that we've come to the conclusion that an SUP is necessary, and that's why we're here.
Okay.
So it's kind of, we regard it more of an housekeeping item and provide the neighborhood some security in its operations item.
Okay. Well, I am interested, because I, for some reason, something sticks in the back of my head that kennels are reviewed at some level by animal control. And I could be completely wrong, and it could be a whole different other universe that I was in at one other time. But anyway, but thank you for those responses. Does anybody have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Abraham may have a response to your inquiry.
Oh, okay. Any other questions for this gentleman? Okay. Steve?
You're correct. Animal control has minimal, minimum requirements for dog, commercial dog kennels.
They do have, they do have a level.
They do, yeah. And then it's, when the license is reissued, they go out.
Okay.
But I don't know what the term of the license is.
Okay. So they'll have to obtain a license if they haven't at this point.
That is correct.
Thank you. I really wasn't dreaming that. Any other questions or comments? What's the board's pleasure at this time?
Mr. Chairman, did you open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. Sorry. Let's open up the public hearing. Anybody else out there in the audience have anything to add to this case? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item number seven as presented.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification purposes, Supervisor Kavanaugh, as presented, is that to include the recommended stipulation addition that Mr. Abraham has presented to the board?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll redo this. I would make a motion that we approve item number seven with the stipulation. Should I just read this out? That we approve resolution 2021 SUP 001-21, a resolution approving case number SUP 00121 with its 14 stipulations, amending stipulation 14 to read as follows, the design, construction, and operations of, and operations three of the commercial kennel and grooming facility shall be in for substantial compliance with the submitted operational five characteristics in the staff report and project narrative from August 6, 2021.
Good, good. Good job.
All right.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let the clerk figure it out. Are you okay? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. It brings us to item number eight. It also has a public hearing component, so don't let me forget to open that. But we'll hear from Ms. Garza.
Good morning, Chairman Miller, members of the board. Celeste Garza with Public Works. I hope you all had a wonderful holiday with your families. I'm here to present item eight, so it's a public hearing for yet another abandonment in District Two. This is located on Schneff Road in the San Tan Valley area, and I'll show you a map here. In 2019, we brought the southern portion of Schneff Road before the board for also an extinguishment. This is the northern portion. So the portion that's already abandoned is in red, located on the map, and the northern portion is in blue that we're talking about today. This is all related to a master planned community called Bella Vista Farms. The San Tan Valley office is located on that map, but not shown on that aerial yet. It's a little old. But this will be the realignment of that arterial north-south connector road. They will be before the board at the meeting on the 15th for the plat approval that'll rededicate the alignment. So the property owner is the same on all sides, so we didn't have to petition any signatures in the area. We just wanted to make sure that alignment stays as a connection for us. So this 90 feet will go away and then be rededicated as 110 in the future. No utilities are in the corridor, so there wasn't any opposition to the abandonment. And these are a couple photos. This is looking from skyline south. So this will be a full five-lane arterial in the future that'll connect to Bella Vista Road. And then this is looking north. There'll be potentially a future traffic signal at this location or a always-stop condition. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Celeste this time?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. And me.
Who are you? McLure.
Here. Just a quick question. It's a 90-foot easement now, and we're abandoning it, abandoning it and coming back later for 110 feet?
Correct. So it's actually, it's a width of 50 and a 40-foot easement today, and then the plat will rededicate it in a little shift of a different alignment. That's why we have to let go of some and then recreate the dedication.
So it's like fly fishing. You throw it out and you bring it back.
Yeah. We ensured that the plat was going to come at the following board meeting. Just if there was any opposition to the abandonment, we wanted to make sure it went through the hearing process. And then we made sure that it's coming back before you next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
And it's coming back wider than what it currently is?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. This is what we need.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anybody from the public like to participate in this conversation? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number eight as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Brings us to item number nine, discussion approval/disapproval of American Rescue Plan Act for reduction of cases backlog. There we go.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Katrina Solis with Court Administration. So before you, we have a grant request for American Rescue Plan. It has to do with working in conjunction with the Arizona Department of Corrections to be able to see the defendants or inmates in those facilities statewide on their cases in the Superior Court that are causing a backlog due to COVID. AOC approved us for a grant for a position. If you look at the grant application, we asked for a position and the licensing for DocuSign to be paid for, for two fiscal years. At this moment, they're giving us the position. We will readjust as long as we provide all of our reports like we're supposed to on the grant for the next fiscal year for the position. We'll have that. They are trying to see if the DocuSign portion of the grant application fits within their scope and will send us a new funding agreement should they decide that it does fit. They just didn't want to hold the grant up while they're looking into that. There is a typo in your motion. It should be for an administrative assistant senior and not an administrative specialist senior. Administrative assistant senior is the position that we put in our budget appropriation forms and all the forms that we sent to the Treasury Office and Finance regarding that position.
Removing the words specialist.
Yes, so it should be an administrative assistant senior position. Do you all have any questions on how the program works now? We've been using it for almost a year. It's going to be nice to have a position that can be dedicated completely to that program.
Okay. All right. Any questions? No comments? It's okay. Seeing none, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number nine with the change from administrative specialist to administrative assistant senior. And the rest of it as presented.
Thank you.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Thank you, Katrina.
Thank you. You guys have a good holiday.
Brings us to item number 10, discussion approval/disapproval of the Air Quality Control Department requests to create a new job classification. And there he is. Mr. Sunblum.
Good morning, Chairman Miller, members of the board. Mike Sunblum, Director of Pinellas County Air Quality. Item before you today is a proposal to create a deputy director position by eliminating a currently vacant air manager, air quality manager position. The result of this is a budget increase of about $26,000 per year, which we've worked with budget, and that falls within our existing revenue stream. It doesn't affect the general fund. This is all self-generated funding. The package that you have there includes the position justification, market study, and the new org chart, the organizational chart. So if you have any questions, I'd be able to answer those.
Any questions? Sounds good. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 10 as presented.
I have a motion.
He needs the help.
And they generate their own revenue, which is really a good thing.
Yeah, that's good.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Item number 11, discussion approval/disapproval of internal audit follow-up procedure completed in fiscal year 2021. There he is.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time today. As a reminder, your review and appropriate approval of certain items is required by our internal audit charter. And also just a reminder that internal audit works appropriately close with county management, and all of our work is reviewed and approved by the Audit Committee prior to coming to you for approval. Brenda Hasler, the Chair of the Audit Committee, is normally with me during these times. She was unable to make it today, but she sends her best regards. So the first thing that we have on our agenda for today as it relates to internal audit is our follow-up procedures for fiscal year 2021. Follow-up procedures is an important part of our process. As you know, we do projects every year, and as a part of those projects, we have action plans that are approved not only by the Audit Committee but are also approved by the folks that we're working with. And so we go back every year and make sure that they have followed up on their commitments. And I would say that our standards for closing those open observations are relatively high. We don't just ask them, we ask for, you know, some additional evidence. We spend some time with them to understand what are the actual things that they did to close those observations and make sure that they were in the appropriate ideas of what it was originally intended. So you can see here, out of the 31 that were open as of the beginning of fiscal year 2021, 11 were closed, and there are still 20 open. On the right-hand side, you can see some of the notes that we have for each of the audits that we completed. A lot of these are very close to being completed. And of course, you know, we always work with them. There's always a few adjustments, and that's okay. Certainly, a few of these are a little bit dated, but as you can understand, many of our observations, while might have some sort of short-term component, many of them do have a long-term component to it, whether that be systems, whether that be how it fits into their long-term plans. And so while, of course, it might be concerning to see some things, you know, with a 2016 date in there, I assure you that... date in there, I assure you that all are being worked on and followed up appropriately. So, this does require, if you have any questions, I'm in any of these categories certainly willing to talk about any of them. This does require your approval. So, any questions on our follow-up procedures for this year?
Any questions on the follow-up? Do I have a?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 11 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it.
Awesome. Onto our next agenda item. This one is for discussion only, and we haven't necessarily done this in the past, but I thought it was important that we review a few of the things that we've talked about, you know, over the last six months or so. Each of you dedicated an appropriate amount of time to spend with us and to talk to us about the things, the risks specifically that face the county. And I thought that it was a great discussion that we had with each of you. And then, as we compiled those themes, we worked closely with management. And to address kind of those themes, we've added these risks to our risk register. So, what that means is that we do our best to always have a complete list of risks that face the county and how those risks are ultimately mitigated. And I thought that we would just maybe spend a little bit of time on each of the themes that were identified, since we did put a lot of, and again, appropriately, you put a lot of effort into this. Again, a much more in-depth discussion was had at the Audit Committee level, and just thought we would summarize this for you. So, the first theme that was identified was economic development and infrastructure planning and strategy, you know, an emerging risk. This is a top priority for county management. As you've seen in many of your meetings here, many things to address, and we're comfortable that this is being identified and each one of those really being handled appropriately. The second theme that came out of it was oversight of third-party vendors. So, as you may know, as the, many of the services that are provided become much more complicated, and especially on the IT areas, you are going out to third-party vendors for their expertise, and that, of course, provides additional risks. What's the good news here is, you know, we do work actively with county management as those are brought to the table. We do audit those and make sure that they are living up to their responsibilities and implement strategies and controls for these emerging risk areas. The third theme was talent management and increasingly competitive labor market. Multiple strategies in process here. Obviously, this is a risk that many organizations are facing right now. You saw one of the things that even today, as the new deputy director position was just approved for air quality control, you know, human resources is just trying to do this, you know, faster, bring these to your attention, and acting on it as quickly as possible. So, again, we think there's a lot of positive things going on related to that theme. Improving processes and digitalization was the fourth theme. Some of this, you know, updating county codes, engaging with experts, providing more services and additional modalities, whether that be digital. Saw a great example of that today, right, in the award that was received by the Treasurer's Office. Many of these initiatives, these processes, these risks are at the department level. And so, it'll be very interesting to see how each one of these departments kind of works to address these different modalities. And I would, again, I would just emphasize that it seems there's a lot of positive things going on in these areas at the department level. Strategic budget analysis, you know, adding finance talent, focusing on financial health, strategic information for business decision-making. You'll see in the next, in my next couple of slides, that we have re-added this to the internal audit plan for next year. So, again, we believe this to be a very important strategic risk, and we'll be looking at this over the next fiscal year. Additional services at additional locations. Again, an emerging risk, consistency of service, proper transfer of information, and transactions are reconciled. You know, we've seen some interesting things happen in these types of scenarios where services are provided at different locations. And so, we've seen where, you know, if they're not reconciled appropriately, that that can become an issue. We've dealt with that maybe a couple of years ago as it relates to court administration. And so, definitely something to keep our eye on. Again, something that we've added to our risk register and we'll be working with and following up with county management to make sure that that risk is appropriately mitigated. And then finally, political processes. So, the public process driven by external guidance, designate staff to ensure accurate information flow, public meetings, transparency and timeliness, and then prioritizing the enhancements when identified. So, again, not a lot that we can do necessarily in this area, but something that is certainly a theme and something that we'll keep our eye on. So, again, this list was identified for discussion purposes only, so no action needed. But again, I thought it was important to follow up with you all and want to thank you for the time that you gave us as we talked about many of these things with each of you. Again, those things have been summarized. We've had really good conversations with county management in each of these categories, and we believe that that time was well-spent. Any questions on these?
Yeah. Any questions or comments on item number 12?
I just.
Go ahead.
Just a question for me. Is your audit done with, just within what the Board's realm is, or does that include other elected offices?
Yeah, our internal audit charter gives us access and authority to audit any activity that happens in Pinellas County. So, that certainly includes the elected officials.
Okay, so, part of your report does include all the other departments?
Yep.
Outside of our other elected officials? Okay, good.
So, our risk assessment, or our risk assessment procedures, which happen, and we'll talk about that here in just a second, on a three-year basis, but then on an annual assessment, includes key members of county management as well as key elected officials as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any questions? Okay. Moves on to item 13.
Which, and as, so the accumulation of that process brings us to our next topic, which is our internal audit plan update. Again, we take all of this information that we have in the time that we have spent with you, and really ends up in two significant components. First of all, is a three-year internal audit plan update. We are in the second year of this plan. So, you can see here that at the top, the things that were completed last year, you can see the items that are planned to be completed this year, and then the items for fiscal year 2023 are also on there, as well as a couple of optional audits, which we're keeping our eye on. And we will appropriately address those if necessary. If you'll go to the second page of this, you'll see the internal audit plan for this year and the hours that are associated with it. You can see the first line item there is a BIA review. BIA stands for Business Impact Analysis, and that has started. It's very nearly complete. It has gone really well. This BIA review was a result of several of the findings that we've had in the past related to IT and security, and it's really going to be a great thing as the county gets this into place. And so, again, nearly finished with that and has gone well. You can see here in the spring, we'll be working on a budgeting and long-term planning audit. So, again, identifying that risk and addressing that here. And then, the last project that we have on our list for this year is the financial reporting, single audit readiness assessment that also is in that kind of financial area. We're also going to spend some time on the business continuity management audit, so that will be following the completion of the BIA. The Business Impact Analysis has a critical role to play in the business continuity, and so we'll be planning that and reviewing the plans that management put in place based on the BIA. The other things on our plan are consistent with prior years. Of course, the risk assessment update, which we've discussed, the results from this year. Prior year follow-up, again, something we've discussed. As you know, we also administer and report on the whistleblower hotline, and then, of course, a line item to make sure that we're reporting to the Audit Committee and, of course, you appropriately. I will say that these hours are consistent with prior year and consistent with our budget, which we are always very careful to stay within the budgeted amounts with which we are given. Questions on our internal audit plan?
Any questions? Seeing none. This is an action item. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 13 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
And number 14.
Yes, our last agenda item related to internal audit for today is just an update on our silent whistle. Again, no action item here, but an important thing for us to report to you and solicit any discussion or questions that you might have. You can see here, we report on the silent whistle on a calendar year basis, so we do it every month. And you can see here that there have been six items this year, and what's most important, and I highlighted that in red, there are no open issues at this time. You know, the good news is that a few less this year than most, but not necessarily inconsistent. So, I would say in most years, we get between 10 and 15 concerns through the silent whistle. This year, a little bit less, which would be generally a positive. But we always want to keep our eye on it too, right? If nobody calls, then it could be possible that no one knows about it too. And so, you know, there's a little bit of a balance there of wanting to know that people can use it, making people, making sure that people, you know, trust that we'll follow up if that we call, but at the same time, using it in an appropriate way. So, I think that those are consistent, and we wanted to provide this update to you and, of course, highlight the fact that we don't have any open issues at this time. That's it. Any questions?
I have no questions. Any questions by the Board? Comments? Seeing none. Believe that was just the discussion update.
Yep.
Just a discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Brings us to item number 15 on the agenda, discussion approval/disapproval of a letter of resignation from Justice of the Peace Brett Isley. Mr. Holcomb.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board. I think everybody's received it. Justice of the Peace Brett Isley filed a resignation. The resignation really said, "I'd like to resign the 22nd or any date before that upon which the Board adopts or appoints my replacement." It can't really work that way. We can't appoint a replacement before he's resigned. So, the Board should, at least in our estimation, just plan on trying to have somebody appointed by that January 22nd date that he provided to us. If the Board recalls, we ran through a very similar issue earlier this year with Judge Nancy Discher. For medical reasons, she resigned. Ultimately, Judge Rudy Torango was appointed, not Torango, Rudy.
Luhon.
Luhon, sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Judge Luhon. My fault. Judge Rudy Luhon was appointed. If you recall, the Board set up a process. I think that process went fairly well where there was a deadline that was set up. It was given to the Clerk's Office. The position was posted, received application. Those applications were reviewed. The Board then convened a smaller group of the Board that performed interviews, and then ultimately, the selection was made. From legal's perspective, that went seamlessly. I can't speak for the Board and how the Board individually felt, but what I would suggest to this Board is that some at least similar situation or setup be established where deadlines are set up. I would caution that January 22nd is not a drop-dead date because the PJ is, our presiding judge of the Superior Court, is obligated to appoint someone if there is not someone that's already been selected. So, if, given the holidays, given all of the investigation needs to occur, if this Board doesn't feel that they can have that January 22nd date accomplished, that's not a problem. I would just ask this Board to give me permission to reach out to our presiding judge, Judge Joseph Giorgini, and Court Admin, and just let them know if it's going to be a little bit later than that to make sure that there's someone there, because there are financial reporting requirements. They have to have somebody that can sign off on money's coming in, money's coming out, paychecks, all of those type of things. With that, I stand for questions. I know this is just kind of a, you know, just a brief.
Just for clarity in my mind, Mr. Attorney, so he is resigned now, then? Is that, is it open, or do we wait till the 22nd? Help me out with that, because...
It's not effective till the 22nd.
It's not effective until the 22nd.
Correct. He said effective the 22nd or when my replacement is appointed. But again, this Board doesn't have the ability to replace him until he effectively resigns, unless, you know, Judge Isley called and said, "Hey, you know what, Kent? This isn't working," or calls the Board and says, "You know, I'm actually going to retire December 22nd." Obviously, we could speed it up, but at that point, those communications haven't had, so we have to use the later-in-date time, which would be the January 22nd. So, he is still the acting Justice of the Peace. He is still the responsible party.
He's still signing off on everything.
Correct, and he will be. My understanding is he does have pro temps that are handling the majority of those services at this point, but he is the one that ultimately is responsible.
What you're telling me is we can, or telling us, we can, we could start the process. We could put out a notice for applications. We could do all of that kind of on the front end of this while he's still sitting in that position.
That is correct, Chair. And in fact, not only can you, it would be my suggestion to do so, because if we wait until then, then we have the 60-day gap where the Court is being forced to appoint somebody on a temporary basis.
Clear on those steps. And Supervisor...
So, I understand that there's like $15,000 budgeted allowance for pro temps, and they're already over that. So, if this continues for another month and a half, it'll be way, way over that. So, is that a problem? How does that work budgetarily?
So, the $15,000 is for...
Please, wait. Get to the microphone. Identify yourself.
Katrina Solis, Court Administration. The $15,000 is for each JP precinct. I don't believe Central Pinellas has met their $15,000 for their pro temp budget yet, but that's also in the, it's in their general fund with the rest of their salaries. So, if they have vacancy savings, they won't go over a budget in that fund per se. I can let the Board know where they're currently at later this afternoon with their individual pro temp budget, but they are not at $15,000 for that court yet.
Thank you.
Question?
Supervisor Goodman.
Is it possible for that to happen between now and the 22nd?
I'll have to look at where they're at. I know that Judge Isley uses his pro temps, and he doesn't schedule them all day long. He uses them for a specific amount of time that he needs them. So, routinely, he has not gotten close to his $15,000. But I can look, and we can do some projections with how that court will look. We could also look at what we did with Copper Corridor, having a full-time pro temp there for a while before someone was appointed. And if we have to appoint someone to be a judge there before you all appoint someone, they are likely to go over their $15,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, I would note that it's a necessary responsibility. So, it's not as if we can just say, "Hey, let's hold off," and there's nothing going there, because the way our system works is Superior Court felony filings actually go through the justice courts as well. So, they have a very vital role in the bigger criminal justice system. You know, there are murder cases, there are sex offender cases. We have to have somebody there. We can't just, you know, shut that down temporarily and reassign it elsewhere. That's not an option. So, if that $15,000 were to go over, I'd be back before this Board on behalf of the criminal justice system saying, "Give them additional budget." I would be begging Leo, I'd be begging Angie to say, "Find more money for them," because it's a vital function that must continue on.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any questions? I guess we just need to monitor that, and so, if we can get an update and make sure that we're, you know, how we're doing in that, in that fund would be a good idea. So, does everybody have this, this motion that's been suggested to us and understanding?
It just appears...
One motion, or do we do it in three separate motions? One? One motion?
It appears we need to pick two supervisors to sit with Mr. Luhon.
Yeah, and then we need to pick two supervisors... Yeah, and then we need to pick two supervisors to...
But to keep him in line.
To, to act as that, that we born.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject, the way you had done it previously for the last opening was the districts that, you know, included, you had those supervisors. However, this one really straddles four districts. So, it makes it a little bit more complicated. So, frankly, you're a little bit more wide open as to how you want to staff the evaluation committee. I do suggest you do not have more than two supervisors on it. Otherwise, we have an open meeting violation. I believe the last time it was two supervisors, and if I'm not wrong, I think the county manager was, was part of that, that committee then.
Correct. So, and I know that our clerk had, did a breakdown on the number of voters from each one of those four districts and population-wise or registered voter-wise, and I believe it was one and four, or one and, at the two highest numbers?
The two highest districts chairman was District One and District Four for registered voters.
For registered voters. So, if that, if that is a barometer that somebody wants to understand or thinks is a good one to use, I just wanted that information given.
Mr. Chair, I think that's a good, I think that's a good direction to go myself.
Well, Mr. Kavanaugh, I have the lion's share of the population, apparently. So...
There was the last, the same two, right?
Same, yes.
You guys are experienced.
Do it again, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Sure.
In our posting, we would put, in the event this comes up, because there, in some strange world, Mr. Judge Isle may not resign. So, we would have to put a conditional on that. Otherwise, would the applicant expect to be hired?
Well, we're accepting his resignation.
If we approve the resignation... I think if you accept it today, I think it becomes binding at that point. So, I, I don't believe that he
He can't back up.
Have the authority to back out if the board chooses on today's date to accept it with that effective date.
Yeah, for that date, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I guess I'm ready for motions or not?
Yeah, I'm ready.
We are. I think we are.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve, let me put my reading glasses on, item number 15, to accept the letter of resignation from Justice of the Peace Brett Isle, Precinct Three, Central Pinnell, District of Pinnell County, effective today, the 1st of December 2021.
But is the resignation effective January 22nd?
Okay, so... I think we can just accept his resignation letter.
My preference is that you had set a date certain.
Okay.
His requested date is January 22nd.
But we...
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Legally, we cannot, we cannot do that. We can't even appoint anybody until the effective date, which is the 22nd specifically.
But we can start the process.
Right. So, we need to, so I guess my thinking is, don't we need to identify the 22nd of January as the effective date of his resignation?
That would be my recommendation.
Effective today, we accept it.
You're accepting it, yes, effective today, but the effective date of the resignation is not until January 22nd.
Okay.
And then ultimately, if Judge Isley were to come back and say, "Hey, I want to resign quicker," we could have another board agenda item, and you could expedite that effective date. Not trying to complicate things, but...
Can we just, can we, can we actually just say, "Unless he comes earlier and wants to resign?"
I would, I would not add that language, but
That kind of language.
But that's the only way that it would be expedited.
I'm a simple guy, but I get it, I get it.
So, Mr. Chairman...
You're on the right track, Kevin.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, for, for the sake of clarity, I'll start over with the motion. So, I would move that we approve item number 15, discussion approval, disapproval of the acceptance letter, or acceptance of letter of resignation from Justice of the Court, Justice of the Peace Brett Isle, Precinct Three, Central Pinnell District of Pinnell County Justice Court, effective January 22nd, 2022, and discussion approval of process for review of candidates and recommendation of replacement. And that we accept his resignation on today's date, Jan, December 1, 2021. And I further move that we approve a committee consisting of two supervisors, District One Supervisor Kevin Kavanaugh, District Four Supervisor Jeff McClure, and County Manager Leo Lou, for acceptance of application of, acceptance of application from Wednesday, December 1, 2021, through Friday, December 31, 2021, followed by the interview of the top candidates by the committee, and any other requirements devised by the supervisors without, with a recommendation for board action at the January 19, 22, 2022 Board of Supervisor Meeting.
You good with that?
All second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayesavet, very good. Thank you, Kent. Item 16, Board Supervisors request any future agenda items. Does any of the board members at this time request something else? Supervisor Goodman?
Mr. Chair, I would like to address some of, have a work session or something along the lines of working with our community development department. As far as evaluating the salaries in that department or things of that nature to entice and bring new additional bodies to that department, we seem to be getting a lot of complaints and because of backlog and things of that nature. Anyway, I would like to see something that we can do on our part. Is there more money that we need to do to help entice that? Anyway, those type of things.
Okay.
And some of the things that's happening over there in that department to improve, because I know they've been making some efforts and doing some things over there in that department. It'd be nice to, to hear from them and give us an update. That's one item. And then along the same lines with the development of our website and our IT, where are we at in that status? Where are we at in that process? And I'd like to see some kind of report back from them, because I know we've put a lot of money towards that, and it'd be good for us to receive some kind of an update, and even in, if possible, an end date when this all's going to launch.
Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have something?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have an agenda item for the 15th of December. It would be a discussion item only. The discussion of principles to follow for supervisor district, the new maps. Will we be accepting public input? How would leadership of the redistricting committee, so to speak, be comprised? Will we use census data or actual data for the district? So, I'd like those, sort of those topics for the December 15th meeting.
Okay. Discussion-only type of thing?
Discussion-only.
Okay, because I think we're still... Mr. County Attorney, would you like to say something?
Mr. Chairman, and maybe this was Kent was going to ask. My only question regarding Supervisor Kavanaugh's request for the 15th is, are we talking legislative districts, supervisory districts, or, or are you limiting to any, any specific type of precincts or JPs?
We only have authority over supervisor and JP districts, and that would be our assumption.
That's what I, that's kind of how I heard your request.
And I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Chair, that was it. I wanted to ask if the board would be willing to expand it to make sure that it also includes JP districts. I know
Yeah.
Judge Bevus spoke with a number of you. I think there are some potential changes. That seems to be a perfectly appropriate opportunity to have that discussion. So, I was simply going to ask to make sure it was...
We can include that.
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'll add the precincts, Justice precincts.
Anyone down here? I'd like a future item, and maybe it's more for discussion and, or just update on our, on our insurance. I've been approached on a couple of different things on, you know, our etna is etna banner, which is not etna. It's different. So, I mean, there's some confusion out there with, with that terminology. But, the real thing I'd like to, to understand, because I got asked this question, and I haven't been able to really reach out and figure out an answer. Do our doctors, or are our doctors, doctors that will prescribe treatment for COVID? That seems to be a real, a real thing now, because the, there is the, you know, the thought process that there's, there are treatments that can be done that minimize the, the virus and should be, should be part of the program. So, I want to make sure that we have doctors in our, in our, what is it, our group that allow us, that do provide that type of, and then pharmacies that also will prescribe the medicines going forward. So, I think that's the next step for, for our employees. So...
Here, here.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I think Tataj is going to let us out of here. This meeting's adjourned.